Okay. Hi, everybody. Welcome to tonight's public candidates forum for the Belgrade School District Board of Trustees. My name is Liz and I'm the adult services librarian here at the Belgrade Community Library. Thank you to our co-hosts, the Bozeman Public Library, Bozeman Professional Women, American Association of University Women, and the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters will also be staying after to help people register to vote. We are thrilled to be hosting tonight's event and to create opportunities for the public to interact with candidates of local elections. I'm glad that you could attend whether you're here live or listening in on our recording later. A few notes before we get started. First, the restroom and emergency exit are in the back. Secondly, please remember to silence your cell phone. And the ballots will be mailed out Friday, April 14th, which is tomorrow, by the county election office. Ballots are due by 8:00 PM on Tuesday, May 2nd, which is Election Day. Ballots can be returned to the county election office in Bozeman, in the Goughton County Courthouse, or Belgrade City Hall, or by mail, and it must be received by May 2nd, by 8:00 PM. All right, we will be recording tonight's forum, both this forum and last week's information session on the Parks and Recreation Levy and the Aquatic Center, and the Urban Transportation District was also recorded and is on our YouTube page. I'll also post it on our social media once again. Tonight's session up on YouTube. I will now read the rules of the forum. The timer will let the candidate know when he or she has one half-minute remaining and no time remaining. Candidates will be asked to finish promptly when the time is up. When candidates, well, candidates will not be so closely timed in their answers from the audiences. The moderator will remind candidates of time constraints if answers get long. The moderator will ask members of the audience to post questions without comments, i.e. editorializing. The forum is designed to hear the candidates' views and not the audience's. The audience will have the option to ask questions verbally themselves, or they can write on cards for the moderator to ask. The first part of the forum will be verbal questions and the latter part will use written questions. I'll get some cards out on the table. If a member of the audience asks if that a question be answered yes or no, the candidates will be allowed to qualify their answers. This forum is meant to help voters understand the candidates' positions, not force the candidates to select answers they don't feel comfortable about. And if questions or answers become repetitive or courtesy is not shown, the moderator will intervene. I would like to turn our time over to now with Sally Mason with the League of Women Voters, who will introduce our panel and outline how the forum will run tonight. Everybody, please welcome Sally.
Hi. And let's all sit down when we talk. I'm from the League of Women Voters and I'm very glad you're all here tonight. Four of the five candidates for two seats, correct?
Correct.
So how many, you get to vote for two? You get to vote for two. And we're gonna start with a two-minute time for each candidate to introduce him herself. Okay? Who wants to be first?
I'm on the end.
Okay.
My name is Rocky Smith. Thank you for letting me talk here tonight. I'm from southwest Colorado originally and grew up in the mountains of Colorado, near Tullioa, Colorado. But I recently was in Australia working for a number of years. My daughter lives in Belgrade and two of my granddaughters are going to school here in Belgrade. So about three years ago, we moved from Australia and came back to Montana, to Belgrade. I lived in Dillon, Montana for 10 years and enjoyed Montana. It's my favorite state of the Union. I've been to 49 of them, but this is the only one I've missed so far is Hawaii. I'm pretty sure since I don't swim that well, I probably still like Montana better. I'm really here to support the students. And what I'd really like to emphasize is how we get the best we can from the teachers, the admin, and the parents to support the best needs of the students. And so that's something that's really important to me. And it'll be the focus that I'll have going forward. Thank you for your time.
Should we just go down? Is that okay?
Yeah, okay.
My name is Jessie Cloud. I am an incumbent. I was appointed to my seat last fall. And in my time spent on the board, I learned a lot of the background to why decisions have been made. And that was one of the main reasons why I wanted to become a part of the board, was to really figure out what the issues were in our district and how I could add to the solution potentially, and also to become more involved in making those decisions. I have a lot of respect for the teachers, the staff, the students, the parents, and faculty in this district. We have a lot of people that go above and beyond continually. And being a part of the board, it has become that much more apparent. But it also has offered insight into the issues that are plaguing our society and are affecting our students. And with the lack of affordable housing, with the issues with retaining great teachers and staff and classified staff and bus drivers, and with the modern day problems that our kids face with bullying and social pressures. I know that there are a lot of issues that we are tasked with as school board members. And I am willing and excited to be a part of the board to make any positive changes in our kids' lives and be there to support our teachers and staff. Thank you.
I'm Nicole Blunt. I'm in my third year. I'm a school born. I've lived in Belgrade since 2002. I graduated from Belgrade High School. I have two kids currently at Saddle Week. Soon to have two stepkids that will be in Saddle Week as well. I've been a bus driver for the school. As I said, I've graduated. I decided to join the, or run for school board three years ago, just to be more involved and to know what's going on. It's easy to complain about things going on in our district. But you don't, as a public, you don't get to see a lot of the things happening unless you're going to those meetings. And I'm one, instead of complaining about them, I like to figure out how things work. And it has been very eye-opening. Things move slowly because of the hoops we have to jump through. But being on a board these three years is very encouraging. And like Jessie says, we have an amazing staff that go above and beyond. And I think it's very important to figure out how we can support them and returning. They're gonna give a better education to our students. And that's what it's all about at the end of the day, is helping out our students. So thank you for letting me be here tonight.
Alyssa? My name's Alyssa Athling and I'm really grateful that all of you came out to support us. Kind of nervous up here, and it's really great to see all of you come out. I grew up in Dillon, Montana, and so I was born and raised in Montana. And then my family moved to the Goughton Valley and we settled in Belgrade. And I put my kids through the Belgrade School District. So I have, my youngest two are now in high school. And their older brothers, they went from Ridgeview Kindergarten through eighth grade to the middle school. And then they graduated at Heritage Christian School in Bozeman. But my younger two are going through the high school. So, um, let's see. So why do I feel I'm qualified to do school board? Well, I'm a parent in the district and I really feel that parent involvement and knowing what's going on in the district is pretty important. I have a master's in special education and then I'm completing clinical mental health and rehab counseling. And then I volunteer at the Help Center right now as part of my internship. And kind of having a unique view of student issues, also wanting to be there to support teachers and the students. We have great staff and they work very, very hard. I know this because I have children who test the rules and push the boundaries. I have kids in special education. And so really wanting to help make sure that we have good policies and procedures in place for safety and that things are going well for the kids. I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you. So we ask each of the candidates to prepare and follow my question. What are the most effective ways for parents to be involved in their child's education? Everybody get that? Okay. Can we start with you?
With me?
Yeah. I'm just gonna go this perp-
Yes, and I've got some notes.
That's fine.
Being involved in a child's education can have significant impact on their academic success. It's really important for parents to be involved through communication with teachers. Regular communication is essential to understand your child's progress, challenges, and strengths. Help with homework. Parents can assist with homework by creating suitable study space and helping with time management. Encouraging reading. Our district encourages kids to read 20 minutes a day. That's kind of the bare minimum and I think it's really important for parents to encourage that. Attending school events, parent-teacher conferences, back-to-school nights, athletic events, and regardless if you're in elementary, attending high school events. Getting involved in the school activities, different PTO, PTA, booster club organizations. Monitoring screen time and social media is really important for kids' academic progress. And setting academic goals together with their children. And encouraging extracurricular activities. We have some amazing programs in our district and a lot of different opportunities for our kids. And a lot of the clubs have travel opportunities that are coming up. And celebrating achievements. I don't believe in giving accolades where accolades aren't due, but I do think a lot of times kids need that extra encouragement from home and from the people that they see, including from our bus drivers down to the teachers and staff. It's really important for those kids to have those celebrations achieved through the whole team.
When I read this question and saw that we had two minutes, I was like, this is, I feel like a very simple answer. And it's just simply being involved and asking questions. And I know that's super hard because everybody gets stretched thin. And when I get that email saying, "Parent-teacher conference is next week," I'm like, how am I gonna fit that in? But going to parent-teacher conferences, asking your kid, not just how your day was, because most kids are like, "Yeah, it's all right. What'd you do?" "I don't know." But asking more engaging questions, reaching out to your teacher. I know COVID was a really difficult time because parents weren't allowed to be as involved in the schools as far as going on site. But just reaching out to the teacher, saying, "Hey, what can I do?" Just giving your child and teachers and staff that support. Research shows that children who have parents who are engaged and involved typically do better academically and are more socially aware and intelligent. And again, I totally get it. I have three kids at home and it's very difficult when you get home from work and you're trying to cook dinner and they're talking about this and that and trying to just be present. And I have to remind myself daily. And it's a simple answer, but it's very difficult to execute. But showing up, going out to the community. I know my kids get super excited when I just go to lunch with them. Something as simple as that, just knowing that you support them and you care about them makes them want to go to school and show you their success in school. I think just communicating with the staff and teachers and letting them know that you're there also as a resource.
Okay.
So I think one of the simplest things parents can do to become involved in our child's education is to meet their child's teacher face-to-face. This will help the teachers to be more comfortable with the parents and the parents to be more comfortable with the teachers. And then parents are more likely to reach out if they see their child struggling and they can reach out to that teacher for support. Because we have master teachers in the district that just have a wealth of knowledge when it comes to broad ranges, even child development for your kid's skills. Because a lot of parents are first-time parents. Not everybody has a lot of kids or a big background. And so your teachers are really a lifeline for the parents. So I think if you get your parents to meet your teachers face-to-face, that's just gonna open them up to a wealth of support and maybe even, you know, lifelong friendships. Teachers love to see these kids succeed over and over throughout the years. And then to parents, I would say, don't be afraid to create opportunities by asking teachers if you could share a special talent with your child's class and then letting them know, "Please reach out to me if there's a special occasion or opportunities that I could volunteer for." I would also ask parents who want to remain involved in their child's education to never stop reading with their child regardless of their age. Reading together isn't just for bedtime stories. So my mom was a librarian and I really feel like a lot of the opportunities that I had and feeling supported in learning came from opportunities to just explore and choose any book I like. Parents can gain insight into their child's interests and then incorporate these into new learning opportunities. And that can help them to spark and maintain their child's interests and attention. And I think establishing a pattern of lifelong learning.
Okay. Rocky?
Well, it's some great answers these ladies have supplied. Must be lunchtime. They've supplied some great-
I don't know what's happening.
Should I stop?
We've got more time. Go, go.
It's a little-
Hi, sorry.
It's a little disconcerting, but, no, I think, as I said, there's some great answers here. I, you know, I'll echo some of the same things. I think that it's a great opportunity when back-to-school night comes, you think about going to school, meeting your children's teachers, talking to them, talking about the curriculum that they plan. If they, if you have a special need with your child, you can talk about that with them. I think it's really important that you make a personal contact with the teacher. The other thing is, I think it's so important for us to have good communications with teachers. And that is exchanging emails or phone numbers so that there's a way to access the teachers as your children are going along. It's not always about when the quarters come up. It's sometimes about the, a chance to talk to teachers when your children are starting to have some difficulties before the quarter gets there. And so I think it's important to do that as well. Another thing I think is critical is for parents to be positive about education and to talk to their student about the really positive aspects education brings to them for a lifetime. And it's something that they can bring, they can share with their student the plans that they have for the future and how education supports those plans. Whether they're gonna be in college, whether they're gonna go to trade school, or whether they're gonna do any other type of activity, it's important. And it's important that the parents also provide a great deal of support to, in front of the children, for the teachers.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Turned off the time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Very thoughtful answers from all of you. And now we come to questions from the audience, so bring it.
What's the biggest challenges facing the district today?
And everybody gets a minute and is it okay with you if we just do it this way? Okay, we're starting to see you there.
The biggest challenges that I have seen with my time on the board and also being a parent in this community is communication. We have a really hard time getting all the correct information out to parents. There's communication breakdowns from the district to the different schools. We are working on trying to unite our district to help those communication issues so that that brings stronger communication from the school board down to the admin, to the principals, teachers, students, parents. That is a really big barrier in our district.
Ditto. Yes, we do strategic planning and that was identified as our number one issue in the district is communication. And also, Belgrade being such a small community, I think we struggle with patting ourselves on the back and being positive and promoting ourselves. And that is also kind of tied into that communication that we've talked about. People get more excited when exciting things are happening and that falls back into the communicating and just making everyone, everyone aware of what's going on in our district is definitely a challenge. And we know that and we're working on it.
I am largely focused on student experience. A lot of perceptions and thoughts that I have stem from there. So I feel like one of the biggest challenges facing the district is really that we have this machine and it is the school and it is the district. And then we have these students and these parents that are coming to it. And so loosening up those barriers, getting better communication in place between the district and the parents. There's stuff that goes on, I have no idea what's happening. And I wish I had more notice as a parent that these things were happening so I could get more involved, so that I could do something about a problem in the district. If there's a problem in the district, it's being handled by the district. I think it needs to be spread out more so that there can be better support from our support, our people. Rocky?
Well, I would say communication is probably a really good one to talk to. I also think that, you know, we had a tough period with COVID and there's been a bit of a setback with the kids and with everybody else. And it's something that we're working our way through. And you can see it when you, when you, I spent some time teaching some classes. You can see that there's not as much attention sometimes and not as much respect given to the teachers as you might have hoped. And so I think that's, again, something that we need to continue to work on, to make sure that this student-teacher relationship is positive and respectful. So that's what I'd have to say.
Okay. Another question. Yes, sir.
So our teachers and our community really love our outgoing superintendent, Godfrey Saunders. As a board member, what do you see your role with a new superintendent, a new deputy superintendent, a new HR director?
Okay.
Or you can actually ditto what you want.
Yeah, it's definitely been brought up as a concern. Godfrey has done amazing things for the district. And I think what we need to focus on is making sure things that he's started and hasn't been able to finish are carried out and communicating that to the new superintendent. And she's very aware of those things, but making sure, again, communication, that his plan is carried out and the new superintendent can bring their ideas, but, yeah.
Yeah, we are pretty unfortunate to be coming into a time when we're losing someone like John Blackman and Godfrey Saunders to retirement years, and we're grateful for them. DeeDee Foddingham has been working very closely with Godfrey. And so as a board, supporting her in her role, I work with superintendents as a parent. And so I see my role as a board member would just be really supporting the superintendent to be able to fulfill their roles and duties. And the new HR director, when they come in, the same, you know, helping them to understand the priorities in the district, what's important, but then also drawing from the new things that they're bringing. The experience that is unique that they have. I know that DeeDee has unique things that she can bring as a superintendent and a new HR director is gonna bring things. So I hope that we are open to listening to those things.
Okay.
Let me just say, I spent a couple of minutes with DeeDee two or three days ago just to get to know her because I didn't, hadn't really met her. I met Godfrey, so I knew him, and he's had an excellent career. However, this, the role that the school board has with respect to the administrator and their role is really to focus on the changes as they're needed coming at us. So one of the things I think that we need to do is understand some of the stuff that's going on with respect to the performance of the school, whether it's achievement tests or A C, uh, college admittance test or whatever. We need to understand that and then use that to help drive forward where we're gonna be going.
I have a lot of respect for DeeDee. I absolutely adore Mr. Saunders as 110% of our community does. But I 100% believe that DeeDee is the right person to step into this role. I think that one of the biggest things that we can do as a school board member is to ensure that policies and procedures are followed and that everybody is held accountable and is following their job description. And that we need to make sure that it's a positive work environment and it trickles down to our students. But if we don't have policies and procedures in place and somebody that will oversee that and really make sure that people are following those, that will derail the plans that we have in place for our district very quickly. And I do believe DeeDee is that person. And I think as a board member, our role is to make sure that she's doing her job and giving her the resources she needs to be able to do that along with the deputy and the HR director.
Another question. Yes, ma'am.
These are the same two questions I've asked for probably 20 years. So would you, as a board member, support the teaching of a standard science education, including Darwin's theory of evolution? And would you support-
Wait, tell me what, let's do one question at a time. Is that okay?
Yes.
So would you su-
Support science education with a standard science curriculum, including Darwin's theory of evolution?
Got it.
You first? Of course. I think that children should have an opportunity to be exposed to all sorts of knowledge. I do not support picking and choosing curriculum and hiding aspects of the world from our kids and curriculum that is available because it is out there. And I don't see a purpose in hiding it from them and the wisdom that they take in that. That being said, there's a lot of misunderstandings with Darwin's curriculum, standard curriculum in science. So I would hope that we would present more about the man and more about his studies. And I don't think there's anything wrong with helping kids get knowledge.
Rocky?
Yeah, I am a scientist at heart, I'm a chemist by education, and I support that approach. However, I think there are lots of things out there, lots of different perspectives. And because you're trained in one aspect doesn't mean you can't be also trained in an opposing view because I think that's also a positive thing. And so I don't really see, at some point in time, everyone has to make- And and so I don't really see, at some point in time, everyone has to make their decision on their own as to where they where this fits together in their head. But for me, I'm fairly comfortable with Darwin's there.
I also support teaching science and also giving different perspectives to kids. It's important through knowledge that kids are allowed to experience and grow and learn from a variety of different subjects. I also believe in allowing our curriculum director to do their job along with the teachers that they work with to pick the curriculum and do our best to support them with whatever resources that they need. Let's trust the professionals to know what is going to be best. At the same time, let's make sure that we are staying ahead of the curriculum. And with those resources, providing up to date information for our students so that our students are leading tests and leading education and having that lifelong wealth of learning.
I would agree. I am not a teacher, I did not go to school, I don't have that education to be a teacher. So that's what's great about being on a board is everyone comes from different backgrounds. And I would support, if it comes from the professionals, that it is in the best the child's best interest to be teaching that, backed by their education and the admin that we have in place. Then that's what I would, I would trust them to make that decision and I would just need more research. And again, that's why we have a board of seven people. Because my view is not going to agree with everybody and you need to have the correct information being given to us to make a decision.
Okay, and your second question?
Well, would you support the teaching of sex education in high school?
Would you support teaching?
The teaching of sex education in high school.
Right, in the high school.
Yes.
Okay, Rocky?
I do support sex education. It's been done for decades. However, you know, I do think it's got a pretty specific criteria for how it's being, how it would be taught. I think certain things with respect to sex education are better left to families to to take care of. Once you get through the basics, I think it's a family issue that has to be addressed. I I support that people, adults can make decisions in any way they like with respect to that. But as far as kids are concerned, I think in some areas, it's best to be controlled or managed by the family. But sex education is a part of education, has been for decades.
I support teaching of sexual sexual education. I think, again, our district has some policies in place that are are there to guide that instruction. I also think it's important that kids are represented and able to have somebody to ask questions to. I think right now we're in a political climate that makes these types of subjects very loaded. And I think it's really important that when we have these discussions with kids, regardless of age, we also understand that there are a lot of homes that don't have these discussions. So I think it's really important that whether it's in the class as a whole, that we at least allow these kids to know that there is somebody that they can talk to and that it's a safe space for them to ask their questions and have those questions answered and heard.
I think it kind of depends on what you define sexual education as, but what it's been traditionally taught as. I do believe it should stay in the schools. But there is a line that needs to be drawn. There's a difference between teaching sexual sexual education and someone's personal thoughts. And we definitely have policies and we reviewed them very recently on where that line is and we need to find that. I 100% think that sexual education should be in the schools.
I thought that sexual education was currently being taught in the middle school, not the high school, when my kids went through. But I believe that sex education should be taught in the schools. I was given the opportunity that my parents opted me out of sexual education. I was one of a handful of students that did not receive that education. And so what did my peers get that I did not get? I feel like that was an injustice to me. And they didn't learn some chemistry or mechanics or something. What they learned was physiological and biology mechanics that I didn't get to learn until I was much older because it was a closed conversation in my home. I didn't have those opportunities to learn about how my own body works and how the opposite gender's body works. And I feel that was a disservice that was done, so I would definitely want that to be available to the kids.
Another another question? Yes, ma'am.
We've had a challenge in the last couple of years recruiting and retaining staff. What do you feel the board's role is in helping support the recruitment and retention of all of our staff? From teachers all the way to our support staff?
Did you hear the question?
Yes.
Jessie?
So we have some really hard issues facing us from cuts in budget from state and federal funding to lack of affordable housing here, to a history of levies failing, which keeps us being able to employ and and keep and retain quality staff. So the role that the board plays, in my opinion, is we really have had some great negotiations recently that have been very successful. And I think it's really important to keep those kind of conversations going. I think it's also really important to keep in mind of these other issues that are stacked against us and find other ways that we can offer benefits to our teachers, including trying to work on affordable childcare, trying to figure out other benefits that we can offer, whether it's gym space time at our gym or other opportunities for our teachers, but also creating a positive work environment and letting them know that we absolutely support them because that's where people want to work, is a place where they're supported.
This is not a simple answer, but there's a lot of things. I think one of the things I do all the time is why would I go work at the school when I can go to Taco Bell and make 25 hours? Taco Bell can raise their prices. We we, there's nothing we can raise our prices on. We're funded by the government and I think a lot of it is the communicating to the public and community. I think there's a lot of confusion on what a bond is and what a levy is. And they just feel like they're just giving us more money. Bonds are for buildings, levies are for buildings. And I think communication is, as I said, we've identified that's a huge issue in our district. And I think just getting out there and communicating that. The staff needs to feel supported. We need to work with organizations like the union and come together and find a solution. That's not always going to be everybody's favorite, but we can really do so much with our budgets.
Alyssa?
And I am not on the school board and I have not had that experience. But I am an unemployed parent in the district and I've been unemployed for a number of years. And I have had a significant amount of challenges and I've wanted to work in our school district. And the problem I keep running into is that they want people who fit the job. And the problem is, is that we don't have people who we can step into these jobs. And so I think it could be beneficial if, as a district, we were able to look at the people that we have. I think we have a lot of parents who have a lot of free time and some stay at home time. And that we change the jobs to fit the needs of the parents so that we can get, I think that's who we should draw on, is the people who live in Belgrade who already live here and look at what their time is. What time do they have available? Just because they can't do Monday through Friday, eight to five, well, what can you do? What, get a toll of what's available in the district? And if they can't do Fridays or they can only go till three, is there some way we can change this job description?
Thanks. Rocky?
Yeah, well, I think this is a, one of the things that was said about the board, communicating to folks about why there's a bond and why they should support it is a really important thing to do. And and I think it's, we need to educate ourselves exactly on how the finances are put together. And then we need to educate the people that we talk to. And we need to submit a series of communications about why this isn't that far out as far as the way everybody has their employment. Everybody has a wage increase. Typically, we've had 2%. Now we've got inflation, so many companies are giving bigger ones. We see this $20 an hour thing. We need to communicate more effectively to the public why we're doing it and the fact that it's imperative, if we're going to keep the best quality of teachers, that we have this this bond.
Yes, sir.
Follow up question on that. What is the, do you see the board's role in passing levies and bonds?
In passing?
Levies and bonds.
Just going out and talking to people. Encouraging people to come to board meetings would be great. And communication, it all comes back to communication. They don't know, they don't know until they get that piece of paper in the mail and they're like, oh, you're asking for more money. We need to be out there and talking to people and explaining why we're asking for this money, what this money is going to go to, how it's going to benefit us. And there's, I think we have a calculator on our website now. People, I don't think people realize it is an increase on our taxes, but not that much. And if you go and look, we have this calculator that I think Carrie just put on a couple of weeks ago. Your taxes aren't really going up that much on the school side. And in our community, the prices of housing, that's a whole other issue. But as far as the school, the taxes that go to the schools really aren't increasing that much.
Alyssa?
I think getting the information about the bonds and the levies out on multiple platforms, just working to get that out, that information in a different way. I think we've posted on our our websites now and there are some places that it's available. But kind of like what Nicole was saying, trying harder to work on new and creative ways to reach more of the population and help them to gain a better understanding. There was a Nextdoor app. And I hadn't known about the issues with the Belgrade Park. But then someone took the time in the city to really get some information out there so that the general person could really understand what was happening and be informed. So I think taking opportunities like that to explain more to people about these things in a different way where they can find it.
Yeah, well, one of the things I think about when I think about budgets is making sure that we understand exactly what we're spending money on. If we get the bond, that's a really important thing. But another part of this is making sure that we spend money effectively for everything that we're doing. So taking a hard look at everything we do is a good start. That's also something when you talk to people out there, you can say to them, look, we've really inspected our budget, we've scrubbed it so that we know that we're spending the money we need to to educate kids as best we can. This money is needed, otherwise we're losing assets. And and is, just like you said, the number of people that are coming into the area goes and also cuts the total cost per unit of per person on this levy. So at the end of the day, it really isn't that large of a problem for any one house. It's an important part for the school, but it's not that big of a deal for each household.
I think the role that the school board members should play in passing a bond or a levy is obviously what everybody is kind of touched based on, is that communication. But also being knowledgeable themselves, educating themselves on it, understanding what the budgets are that are facing our district so we can have those conversations when we go out. I'm a small business owner, so I talk to a lot of different business owners, talk to a lot of community members. And it was shocking to me when I found out that the state sets our budget at 80% of our operating. And then we have to come up with, from the voters, that additional 20%. I had no idea. I thought that the district just set that amount of like, hey, this is how much we're going to ask for. So I think it's really important that the role of the school board is, we, yes, we want to educate voters, but we also really need to educate ourselves. Because if you can't be transparent and honest and educated in your responses to people, why would somebody even listen to you about where their money is going to go if you can't answer those questions? So I think there's a lot of information that needs to to happen.
Yes, in the back?
I have a question on that whole calculator that's out there. I haven't looked at it yet, I'm going to, because I'd like to answer the whole on how to explain things. Is the calculator making people aware of an assessed home value compared to market value? Because everybody gets on Zillow now and their brain is exploding. So that's, I just want to know that so I can get that information correctly too, the assessed value.
And I think Marielle actually used it herself, didn't you?
Pardon me?
Didn't you use the calculator? You and Carrie used it?
Carrie's points for every slot on board, yeah, in her books. Good. Do you want to announce to everybody about that?
If they want to say ditto, that's great.
I I don't know anything about the calculator specifically, just that it's complicated for everyone.
No, I just didn't have anything to say, I haven't seen the calculator, so I will be taking a look at it though.
I just would like to add, we have updated the website so people can go straight to the PSD44.org and it's right there to click on. You can put in your home value. You do need your tax form. You do need to put in your address and the specific information from your tax bill. And it will bring up exactly what your taxes will be. The average household will be less than $5 for this particular levy though, per month.
Yes, ma'am.
So this was a question I received via email earlier this week. What are the main threats to a strong public education system? The main threats to a strong public education system.
Rocky?
Well, I think obviously the quality of the of the teachers and that you're able to maintain and a lot of that comes back to do you have people that, do you have the money to keep the really quality teachers here? Or do you lose quality teachers to places like Bozeman or wherever? And that's a, that's a big part of it. Another part of it is having interactions with the public. This, it's so important that not only the parents, but other groups of the community are part of our education system. We need to do more outreach with some of these other groups to see if we can add value to the quality of the education that we're delivering. Thank you.
Jessie?
I would say lack of funding is a threat to public education. I would say misinformation is a threat to public education. And I would say it's it's kind of hard to explain, but we've somehow lost that our schools are the heartbeat of our communities. And we really need to find our way back to that. That's what builds a strong village and that's what we really need to find. And that's something that if I continue my role on the school board, I will continue to advocate because I was lucky enough to have that growing up and I know the impact that that can have. And I know that that's something our community deserves to have as well.
I think everyone would agree funding is definitely a big battle we're fighting. I think Belgrade specifically, it's how fast we're growing and trying to keep up with that growth and expanding. I mean, we're already short-staffed and then we're having more kids come in. We're trying to catch up and we're growing at the same time. I think specifically Belgrade is dealing with that issue. And then misinformation, it's so easy to go on, there's- And then misinformation, it's so easy to go on, there's, I won't name them, but there's some groups online. And it's very easy to fall into the native and not be correctly uniformed on it. So community involvement and just being a community. And that's why we have the staff we have, because it's a community. Obviously, it's not for the pay. And just supporting them and being a community and loving where you live.
Alyssa?
I think one of the biggest threats would be our, the education itself. That we need strong, cutting edge curriculum that really competes. That puts our students at that edge to where that when they are graduating and they get out into the world, they don't have an obsolete education. They're not studying things that we were studying so long ago. And where are we compared to some of the larger or major cities, even out of state? What does our high school experience look like compared to a, a large high school? And then there's arguments like, do we have the funding? Can we get this? Some of it, we can do certificates and partnering with like, I don't know, there's Adobe certificates kids can get at some high schools for completing coursework. So I think just creatively looking for ways to keep our curriculum cutting edge.
Yes, ma'am?
As someone who works in the high school and I'm going to speak specific, specifically for the high school in this question, are you guys aware of the mental health need in the high school? And what is your perception of what we can do to help these kids because it's big?
Oh, am I sorry? Your turn. Mental health is a crisis for our, our young students. And it's really prevalent in the high school. It's really prevalent in the middle school. It's even trickling down to the elementary age. COVID, I think, was a big awakening for a lot of us, those kids being isolated. But I also think social media is brutal. And I think that's one of those talking points of what I brought up earlier. Parents have to be involved. As the school, we can't monitor what kids are doing online, which is awful. But really working with the teachers, working with the staff, having a person. I think that we've got some really great programs in place with the Ruler Program and having a, a point of contact person. It's the steps, but we know we need more funding and access and conversations and being aware are just those first steps. I don't know the answer, but I know that I'm aware of it. I know we've all got to be aware of it.
Like Jessie said, COVID, I think, definitely opened our eyes a little bit more. There's a program at the district that's going to be starting next year called the Ruler Program. It definitely caters more to K eight, but that's where you have to start. To be honest, I haven't heard talks of what we're going to do at the high school level. But we, we definitely know that there is a need to not just be providing a textbook education, but being aware of where our kids are socially, emotionally. And the Ruler Program, I think, is going to be great for that. And it has to start at a young age and it'll follow them into high school. I know that doesn't solve the problem at the high school level right now. But I think one of the things to solve that issue is getting our parents more engaged. The kids are at schools for the majority of their school career. And I think a lot of parents fall into the habit and they just need to be more involved with their students.
Alyssa?
So as a parent of students who have struggled with mental health issues in the district and then volunteering over at the health center. So I really strongly feel like there's a lot that needs to be done here. And I think it involves partnering with different agencies in the valley. I recently attended a webinar with Carl Rosten. He is a suicide prevention coordinator for Montana. And he feels that the largest problem is in the response. So you've got a kid who's struggling, they're acting out if they're younger. They're coming to you and they're, they're saying, I'm suicidal and what's the response? It falls. So I'm feeling like we have empty classrooms near our school. We should be partnering with some other agencies in some way. We don't have an in-school suspension teacher, so if you get suspended, you're suspended. But if you're in a little bit of trouble, you're not getting support. I feel like ISS, if we can get a good suspension program, would be a way that we can get kids who are struggling and acting out attention.
Rocky?
You know, I agree with a lot of the comments made. I think we see kids frequently attempting suicide, which tells us something that we don't want to hear. We see kids making it to the end and being successful at suicide. That's a tragedy. And that just tells us we're not doing what we need to do. We've got to do a better job. We need more counselors. We need to work as, as mentioned before, with the outside resources to facilitate a change in the way we're doing business. Because this is, this is something that we're not used to seeing. Not in this part of the world. I wouldn't think we would be this, we wouldn't be seeing something like this, but we are. And it's telling us something that we need to start listening.
Any more questions? Go ahead, Jane, sure.
Book banning, do you think the school board has a role in deciding what books are in the school libraries? And what is that role and what kind of guidelines would you use?
Nicole? You're up. Tough question. An important thing.
This is another hot topic right now. And it's, it's, we haven't gone into full blown conversations on the school board yet, but I know it's coming. My perspective with my background is again, I have to, I have to lean on the experts. I have my personal views, but again, I feel like we really have to base our decisions on what is in our schools based on the experts and admin that we have hired and have hired for a reason because we feel like they're the best in that field.
Alyssa?
I want to rely on the students. We can fill a library full of things that they're not interested, they walk past and they stay on their phone. And I think that by looking to them as a guide and then pushing that towards our professionals so that they can decide, okay, what is appropriate, acceptable, and what's the most enriching that we can get them to engage with? I think that might be a good way to find success. I haven't been on the school board, so no, I don't know what these arguments are in these hot topics. Yeah, just with spending a lot of time in the library growing up when my mom was a librarian, just, but they got, they kind of got whatever book they wanted. It was different than a school library.
Rocky?
Yeah, I know this is a hot topic nationally. I don't know that it's such a big topic here, but I, I kind of go back to, there's a, a collection of people here that really need to talk about a lot of different aspects of the school. You've got the educators, you've got the, the parents, you've got the administrators. They've got to be having a continual dialogue about what's going on. If there's specific things that people have an issue with, I think the thing to do is to sit down and talk about it. And talk about why things are in the library or why they shouldn't be in the library. I tend to be more down the road of including things in the library. But again, some things are too explicit to be in the library, so we have to be very careful with some of that. But in general, I, I think that the professionals are going to give us an idea of the kinds of things that we would like to see from an educational perspective.
The state actually has set of guidelines and policies and procedures in place for this specific instance. And we trust our librarians in our school district to adhere to those. There's a list of books that we are allowed to have and aren't allowed to have. And we know that our librarians are up to task to following those rules. As far as the debates that are coming forth, and we do know that there's going to be more coming this way, I just ask people to think, when in history is anybody looked back on towards banning something been thought of as a good thing? I don't know, leave it at that. Yes, sir?
Back to mental health and hot topics around the nation. How do we keep Belgrade School safe?
Safe from intruders.
Safe from intruders, safe from our students.
Alyssa?
So how do we keep our Belgrade School safe from intruders? I really wish that we had an onsite retired military person at the front of the school that was being paid a rate to patrol the grounds. After school shootings started happening when I was in high school, Columbine, I, that was my idea. I was like, why aren't there retired military people that really care about these kids walking around the school and just doing random controls? From the students themselves, I think that we have a great monitoring program in place on the computers so that if certain things queue, but the problem is, is that we don't have access to their private phones. I think parent involvement. If there is a way to increase standards, increase communication and get better cooperation between our, our kids and our parents, that it's okay to put some boundaries in place, that there could be better monitoring, we might get some good involvement.
Okay, Rocky?
I might be a little bit hard on some, but from my perspective, if there's a, somebody that comes in and makes a threat, they need to be removed, they need to be expelled. I, I would, my concern is if you don't make strong actions on someone that makes threats and then six months from now, something happens and that happened, there is an issue, how do you live with yourself? How would you live with yourself? I think we have to hold strong when people make threats on our kids that we do something about it and we get them out, out of the school. And, you know, no apologies to that, but that's how I feel.
Jessie? It's a tricky question. We have a lot of kids right now, like we've discussed, that are facing a lot of mental health issues. We have a lot of broken homes that kids are coming from. We have a lot of scary situations that are plaguing our nation. We've just had another school shooting not that long ago. And so how do you keep the kids safe? Well, I know in our district, we have policies, procedures and a plan in place. And yes, you hope that that is what will, will work. And yes, you hope that you don't have to face these things. But I do know that the plans that we have put in place, I've read through the document multiple times of what that is all entailed in that. I do believe that that is our best bet. I also know that with our SROs patrolling that we have currently in our district also helps with that. But again, it's, it's a tricky, tricky question.
I think there's definitely the mechanical things that we need, making sure doors are locked, having our SRO. We now have two in our district having them on site. I think the, the tricky part is the mental health and actually feeling safe in the school. Yeah, the doors can be locked, but if you don't feel safe by the teachers, from the teachers, the staff, the students, it's the human connection and that is so hard. That's, it's, I, it's very difficult. You can teach somebody a textbook, but teaching human connection, that's, that's, I think, where you feel safe. And that's, that's the really hard part. And I know our district has worked on having more security in our schools. Cameras have been updated, having an additional SRO in, in our district, locking doors. Having, we have a committee that is the emergency planning committee. But I think the biggest issue is just the human part of it and making sure everyone feels safe.
Any more questions?
I have another one.
Okay. Go for it, Jane.
My kids went to school K through twelve, all three of them, and they had really different needs. My oldest was kind of, was gifted. My middle child was struggling and he needed extra help. And my youngest child was sort of down the middle. And I thought they did a great job with my youngest, that kid that isn't one of those two extremes. But I thought they struggled a little bit with the two, two on the ends. Keeping my daughter engaged when she was a gifted student, especially at the end. And my son, when he was younger, getting a better start. What is the school board's role in developing those types? Isn't that really hard for a teacher to have those three different kids? What is?
Rocky?
Yeah, I think that, that's a great question. Because two of my granddaughters that are in school, they're, they're definitely different personalities. One's super bright. And, you know, she's going to do really well if she's challenged. The other is athletic, more social butterfly type person, you know? I think she'll be more of the middle of the road type of person. But I think we have to have things to challenge kids that are bright. We need to make sure that we do the best we can with those. And again, I think if kids are having struggles, I think it's really important that we have dialogues as quickly as we can with the teachers if we talk about what can we do to improve the schooling that they're having? Is there something that we need to add to their curriculum to help them, you know, catch up or improve their performance? And so I think that's something that the board could probably work with the, the teachers or the admin to put the best results together.
Jessie? I think there's a conversation going that we do need to look into a gifted and talented program within our district. We have a lot of kids that we want to be able to engage. We are living in a time where teachers' hands are pretty restricted because of a lot of testing. And so how do you give the teachers the freedom? I think we advocate to the administrators to allow our teachers to have that freedom. But like Rocky had said, making sure that they've got access to ongoing education for learning those different aspects. But I also think it's really important that we allow within those areas of learning, there's going to be some mistakes made with kids. There is, there's not, there's not one size fits all. And so I think it's having that ongoing communication with the teachers, but also advocating for maybe more PIR days within our district specifically for our teachers so that they have that time for that continuing education. Nicole?
Having kids in South Peak, having a very intelligent older daughter who is, she's a self learner. She likes to go and she's always reading. She's teaching her, her siblings and having another daughter who's, she's also intelligent, but she's more of a street smart. They're totally different. I think a lot of times parents send their kids to school and they're like, it's your problem. Not problem, I guess that's not, probably not a good word. It's your job to teach them. And then they're coming home and we're not encouraging the teaching at home. I think it comes a lot from the parents. And there's so many times where I will just reach out to the teacher and be like, my, my child is struggling, what can I do? Or my child doesn't feel challenged, what can I do? And just having the conversations. And obviously, the lack of staff, at least our staff, is difficult. I don't think there's one teacher in this district that doesn't go above and beyond.
I don't think there's one teacher in this district that doesn't go above and beyond. But just communication and talking and seeing what you can do at home to support that.
Alyssa?
So working to support both ends of that spectrum. I too had children that were all over the board. So my oldest son was removed from school here and put at paredentation school for high school because I felt that there wasn't what he needed at our school. He had tried to go and do a gifted and talented program and it wasn't something he was interested in and it turned out to be an extracurricular work. So just because we have a gifted and talented program doesn't mean it's really effective. But he was able to flourish there and that was great. And then on the end with the kids who are struggling, that is the primary reason I'm running for school board is that I ended up in a discipline conflict where I felt that there was policies and procedures that needed to be tightened up. And when we get to like expelling a child, we need to wrap around that child, we need to engage that child. And if a child does a school shooting or there is a violent event, they typically have a grievance with the school. If you kick them out, where are they going to go? They're not moving.
Anybody else? Okay, how about we do two minutes to wrap up and, and why, why people should vote for you? How's that sound? And who wants to go first? They're starting that way this time.
I'll start first. So I love everybody still. I have been on the school board for three years. And when I joined school board, I was told, it's just a meeting once a month. Pretty easy. They are liars. And Nicole threw us off. I don't think there's very seldomly been a week where we did not have a meeting, whether it's committee meeting, board meeting, special board meeting. There's so much to learn. My goal, being on the board, if I get re-elected, is to dive into the financial side of things. There is no way I could have learned and still haven't learned everything there is. The education, the curriculum, the communication, how admin works, policies and procedures, the financial side of it. There is so much to it. And I think to be an effective and successful board member, me personally, I, I think three years is not long enough to do that.
Okay, who would like to be next? Do you want to go down that line? It does depend, who you guys pick.
I can go first.
Okay.
I really appreciate everything that Nicole is saying, that she has put a lot of time in. And there is so much to learn. One of the things that I'm primarily interested in, that's probably become, become quite apparent, is enriching student experience in the district and bridging that gap between the district as a machine and the parents and the families that they serve and transferring that heart of the way the district's functioning to our student body and our families. And the district is the heart of the people and promoting that, embracing our students who are struggling. I believe the Ruler Program is going to roll out in high schools as well. That's what I've been told. And we did experience that in another school and that my kids were a part of. And it went really, really well. So just looking for ways to enrich student experience all the way from kids that need more, more in their education, more opportunities, they just eat it up and they can't get enough, whether that's academic or extracurricular or sports. And then all the way down to that discipline of they're, they're trying to fall out of the school and land who knows where. Grabbing those kids up and getting them in, engaged in whatever way we possibly can, in any way they need. I feel like there has got to be ways to connect and reach these students and wrap around that mental health crisis and dig them back in in some way to grow.
Next, who wants to be next?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for loving me come. When I think about this school board and the school itself, I think this is sort of more than a three-year thing. As Nicole says, it's, it's a journey here. We've got to, it's going to take some bit of time to make the improvements that need to be made. And improvements need to be made whether we believe it or not. Changes are coming. COVID was a big hit, but we've got to get past COVID. We've got to work on what's coming in the future. For me, it's a little bit about, my, my background is business. And so as far as the economics, the costs and things of that nature, those are sort of second nature to me. But I'd like to see more indicators, performance indicators, to see how we're performing as a school against where we were in the past. And look at where we're going in the future. Another big issue for me is when I look at the kids, you know, there's a number of kids that are coming into school early in the morning to get food. And they get food at lunch. So five days a week, they get two meals a day. Now, I know there's a program starting to where they're going to start giving them seven days a week, giving them food for seven days a week. One of the things I'd suggest, because that doesn't come for free, is that we get more community outreach. We, we reach out to other people, whether it's, whether it's the people that live here or if it's, if it's people that are doing business here. And we bring their help in to help drive some of these things that need to happen. And the last thing is just, we need to have more respect from the kids to the, to the students, to the admin, to the parents. We've got to have a, a circle of respect to make this a better place.
And you get the last word, Jesse?
I guess. I want to just advocate that our, our town, yes, it's growing. And we are trying to deal with that the best that we can. But we really have lost that sense of village, that heartbeat. And I think we are able to get that back. I think community spirit is something that Belgrade used to have that we can have again. That builds school spirit, that builds that human-to-human touch, that communication. People want to be at the school, people want to be at events, people want to be involved. And I think being a part of the school board, we champion that. We lead by example. If we're excited about things, if we're showing up at things, if we're talking about things, if we're passionate about things, it is contagious and people want to be around that. And people see that spark. And if you support your admin and you support your teachers and you support the staff and you show that you're fighting for them, whether it's advocating for, okay, we know that, that this negotiation didn't go your way, we're going to try and figure out another way to get you a benefit. We're advocating for the students, we know that we don't have counselors that we can get, but we're going to try and figure out other ways that we can get you mental health care. We can advocate for that as school board members because we need to champion this district. We are not just sitting in that boardroom, like Nicole said, once a month. We are continually at meetings, whether it's with staff or teachers, students, admins. We are going to athletic activities, we're going to bingo nights, we're going to the Pro Start events. We're, we're trying to be there to show that we care because the school is the heartbeat of any community. And if your school board doesn't represent all the different facets of your community and all those hopes and dreams and cares about our district, it's going to fall flat. And I think with me on the school board, I will advocate and continue to advocate for that to grow.
I want to thank you all for coming out. I want to thank the four of you for running. It's a huge commitment and your civic, whatever it is shines through. And thank you to the audience for great thoughtful questions. And it's been a joy. Thanks.